Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hello. Welcome to the work session. It's January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven thirty. The work session of the Mayor and Council. And would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement? Linda?
Yes. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
May we please have a roll call?
Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Mayor Wozinski.
Here. So about a week and a half ago, everybody received an email that was from the Allendale Republican Municipal Committee. And they all met on January eleventh, and I hope everybody had the opportunity to reflect and look at all the names. They actually presented three wonderful names. And we're very happy that we have three qualified individuals that wanted to join our council. This, just to note, is according to New Jersey statute forty A sixteen dash eleven. So I hope everybody had the opportunity to read it, and I would like to know if somebody has a recommendation.
Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation. All of the names that were given to us were very strong candidates. I would like to recommend and endorse Joe Deloissio.
Excellent. Any other comments?
Building upon Councilman O'Toole's recommendation, I also recommend Joe. Joe's been great to work with in town, and the Holiday Observers know that he would make a great addition to this team, and I know we all would work well together.
Perfect. All right. Well, thanks for that information, and we will.
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to say something too, because I wholeheartedly endorse Joe Deloissio. Joe and I have served together for many years on the Allendale Land Use Board and a brief time on our municipal committee. And if you really want the straight and authentic take on something, you turn to Joe. His expertise on the board is invaluable. He listens to our applicants. He considers everything our professionals say, and then he adds his own insight into every application before us. His comments are never frivolous. His questions and suggestions are always on target and on point. And he tempers it all with a good natured attitude and everything he does. He's involved in so many things in town, and I just look forward to to seeing you here tonight and to going forward with this nomination.
Excellent. So our first order of business in the regular session will be our oath of office. Any other comments while we have everybody present? Nope. Okay. So so next will be a public comment. This is one of three times the public has the opportunity to speak. If anybody would like to speak, please come on up and say your name. I would just like to ask everybody to make sure they speak very loudly. If you notice, our clerk is not here this evening, but she is here via Zoom, so make sure you state your name and your address quite loudly. Come on up.
Good evening. Hi, Liz White, twenty-sixth East Crescent Avenue in Allendale.
Hello.
Excuse me?
I said hello, Liz White.
Hello. Thank you so much for reviewing the letter and proposal we had sent from the municipal committee. As the mayor said, we had three great candidates, and we are thrilled with all of them, but especially with your endorsement of Joe. We know he's going to do a fabulous job. I know Suzanne spoke with Joe being on the Land Use Board. Mayor Barra and I have also worked with Joe on the Allendale Senior.
You took that in.
That was. No, that wasn't a shot, Ray. Allendale Housing Inc., our special needs housing board, and Joe has been such a fabulous addition to the board. Much like Suzanne said, he's very thoughtful, engaged, and such a positive person to work with. So I know he's going to be fabulous, working with such a great team up here, and we really appreciate the consideration tonight. And congratulations, Joe, and thank you to your family.
Well, I will make a response back to Liz and also to Joe. I wasn't sure exactly how we did this, but I agree. I think that the candidates that you put forward are excellent. I love that we have people that want to volunteer in Allendale for a position like what we're in up here, because it certainly is a job that takes all of those characteristics that have been described about you, Joe, and I have heard the same thing. So I am truly looking forward to having the opportunity to work with you on the council, and thank you so much to you and to your family for being willing to serve alongside of all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Ms. Barra, Mayor Emeritus, just a quick comment about Joe. He's served with with us on the Allendale Housing Board, and he has been invaluable. But more than his contributions, the thing I'm most impressed about Joe is what a great husband he is and a great father. And so you can't miss when you've got both of those behind you. So he's going to be invaluable to this board, and you got a council. You are so lucky. And Joe, congratulations, and congratulations to all of you. Oh, sometimes my wife used to say condolences.
Friends on the deck.
Hello.
Hello. Who are you? This is becoming a habit.
Steve Sasso, thirty-seater drive, Allendale. Weird. It's really weird sitting on this side. I'll get used to it.
You didn't say you were going to do this.
More importantly, I have to get used to you. Because I'm not going anywhere. So real quick, I've got to know Joe Deloissio. I got to know him on the planning board, now the land use board. He's my around-the-corner neighbor, who I always seem to be walking my dog when he's going to work. So and he always stops or very often, at least he waves and very often stops to chat. And for that and a lot of other reasons, I think he's going to be a tremendous addition. And I'll be, as a resident, reaching out to him, and if he doesn't get back to me, I know where he lives, and I know and I know he drives a red pickup. So and I got a little gift for you, but you have to wait until you get sworn in.
Exactly.
These keys were given to me nine years ago by Susan LaMonica Pash.
Oh, wow.
Who was going out after years on the council, and I was going in, and I was the fresh-faced kid, I guess. And she gave them to me. So Joe, I'm going to give them to you after you get sworn in, because I don't need them. This is the front door. This is the office door, and this key, in nine years, I could never figure out what it went to. Maybe it's Susan's house. I never tried it. And the keychain I added, and you can keep that. It's also a bottle opener. After a few months on the council, you will need, especially when you look at Facebook. So yeah, don't look. I got off of that, by the way. I'm off, and I've never been happier in my life. It's like, you know, a handful of Prozac in one shot. So thank you all. Joe, welcome in advance.
You can say whatever you want. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, so we have some time. We're going to do some administration agenda review. So our first business item is swearing in of our new councilperson. And then we have a second reading of a public ordinance and hearing, and public hearings, second reading and public hearing of our ordinance. And then we have our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, of course, is some routine items. However, there's some that I'd like to note on here. One is that we have, we will be hiring a new CFO. Her name is Allison, and Alyssa is in the back. We are going to miss her. How long have you been with us, Alyssa? Fifteen years.
Wow.
So she does have big shoes to fill with Alyssa, but Alyssa has been so kind to say that she would stay on board and onboard her and teach her the ropes of Allendale. She's lovely. She is going to fit right in with our team, so we're going to be very excited to have her, and she actually starts February sixth. And we also are hiring two other people to the police department team. A radio dispatcher, Peggy Timoney, and another radio police dispatcher, Kristen Henderson. Okay, any unfinished business we have? Any new business? All right, so why don't we start with committee report? Ed, you want to start down there?
With the DPW, the Christmas tree pickup has been going well. We're also in the first phase of our auction. We raised thirty thousand. We're doing a second phase in February, hoping to make at least as much, if not more. Ron's still very thankful that no snow has fallen. Discursed it by now, but we'll save some money in our budget if it continues that way. Let's see what else. The DPW will be preparing a couple of capital budget line items for the budget coming up. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Suzanne?
So I have segwayed from Land Use Board Chair to Finance, Human Resource and Administration Chair, and it's been great. I'll be the second on Land Use, so I can still stay involved in that, which I'm really happy about. We postponed our Land Use Committee meeting for a week, so that will be next Wednesday morning at eight o'clock. As far as finance goes, Alyssa, I've only been working with you now a short time, but, I mean, you are just a wealth of knowledge, and I thank you for keeping us on the fiscal straight and narrow for so many years, and your expertise is amazing, and I learn something every time we're together. So we've been working on the budget. As far as the green team, we had a very successful styrofoam collection event in conjunction with Waldwick the other day. I wrote a note to the Waldwick mayor to thank him, because he came out that day to help us also. Thank you, Mark Savistano, for spearheading that and the whole green team for being a part of that. And I'm also the new liaison to the library board, and they're meeting in the other room right now and doing their reorg, so I'm looking forward to being a part of that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Liz Holman, Councilwoman.
Hi. Yeah, so I am going to stay as the Chair of Water, which you may have heard, and I'm water and sewer. And the water will really be a transitioning, you know, program of Veolia, ensuring that they get all of their easements and that we get the remaining funds that are still in escrow until we can provide all of the appropriate easements. So it's a great work in progress, really, by our legal team in many aspects. But we've been working well with Veolia. As far as sewer, we do have new numbers for the budget this year from Northwest Bergen Sewer Authority, and I'll discuss those at the next meeting, just because I do want to take a deeper dive into how those numbers are being calculated and make sure that we are a hundred percent in agreement with all of those numbers. Our next and our first water and sewer meeting this year will be this coming Friday afternoon. So this is probably the shortest report I've given in years.
Excellent. Councilman O'Toole.
Thank you very much. Even though you stole a good portion of my report, I will forge ahead. Public Safety Committee is not at a meeting since our last council meeting, but we're targeting a date in early February, the seventh, exactly. We already have quite an agenda on tap for that evening, covering some significant topics. As you mentioned, the mayor will be appointed two new police dispatchers tonight. They are taking the place of now officers Rubino and Dunn, who will be starting the academy tomorrow.
Yay, tomorrow.
And that's all I've got for now.
All right. Thank you very much. Allison Yakarino.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my second or my first full meeting since being sworn in. Still in the process of getting acclimated to some of the ins and outs, but Mayor and I have spoken on a couple of occasions in the process of getting on-boarded and getting some things in motion here, thanks to Amy, our my fellow council folks, and our staff for being supportive so far, and I know that that will continue. Amy, Ron, and I will be having a facilities, parks, and recreation meeting next Thursday, and we're almost on page two of our agenda for our first meeting. So we have a lot of things going on there, so a lot of good things, a lot of positives for Crestwood and Esthetic, so a lot of good things happening there. Amy and I also talked about an upcoming ASA Sports Alliance meeting, so we'll look to get that on the calendar.
Great.
And other than that, again, congratulations, Joe, and look forward to you joining us. Thank you.
All righty. So I will give a quick report, very quiet compared to our last meeting, so this is my first meeting too. We are, I'm really happy to be here. Honestly, you guys are an amazing team, and I think I'm super thrilled that we're going to add Joe to our team as well. I'd like to update on two twenty. We're getting another week, week closer to our demo day. We have a big meeting tomorrow with all the project managers, the project manager for us, who is Chuck Totozian, the project manager for Hampshire, the project manager for the builder. We're also going to be meeting with the architects to finalize the plans. And I'm hoping by the next weekend, we'll have a resolution to go to bid to start the process of building our community center. So that is going to be really exciting for the community. I'm looking forward to actually the monthly mayor's meeting, so there's some fun stuff coming up, and I actually had my my first Land Use Board meeting yesterday. There's two nice young Allendale families that are making improvements to their house, so it's all great. We have Araby's Clinic on this Saturday from twelve to two, also at the Red Barn. Yeah. How are you doing, Linda? Just a check-in. Can you hear everybody?
I can hear you guys perfectly.
Great. Okay, so with that, we'll go to some staff reports. We still have fifteen minutes. We'll start with Ray Wiss, our Borough Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of our time has been spent on the post-closing efforts on two twenty and on the water utility sale. You know, Tom Borshy's been actively involved on the follow-up, as you're aware, and involved on the two twenty, and I guess we had a meeting with Veolia as recently as this morning on the water utility, and most of that is relating to the fact that over a period of years since the Borough owned both the land and the utility, many of the easements that now have to be conveyed to Veolia were really never recorded of record. So Veolia's had their surveyor out in the field. We'll continue to do so probably for the next several months in order to identify where water utilities are located, create meets and bounds descriptions of the easements that are required to be conveyed, and then our office will have to actually prepare the easements for recordation. So that process, even though the closing has taken place, which we all applauded, the aftermath is probably going to span out several months, because we actually need Veolia to do their work before we can do the the legal aspect of it. Other than that, working with the chief on some departmental matters, with Ron Kistner on some personnel matters and some contract matters. And I just want to join in saying, Alyssa, I've had the opportunity to probably work with CFOs in half the municipalities in the county, and you've always been one of the most professional, competent, and diligent. It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
You're not leaving yet, though, right? What's our date? Flexible.
If you're here for another meeting, let's all say it again. Yeah.
And while the attention is all on Alyssa Mayer, do you have a staff report or CFO in the back? We are.
I am very happy with the choice that you.
And Chief Mike Dillon?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So echo raise sentiments about Alyssa. I mean, I just am getting used to working with her. It's not in a good groove, so I'm sorry to see her go, but I know it's for much better things for her and her family. And just a quick note about Veolia. So we have had interactions with Veolia numerous times since the beginning of the year. There's been a lot of breaks. I know I'm just trying to keep track of it, but I'm thinking we're definitely in double digits from the beginning of the year. So our water supervisor, it's Jim Fagie. He's been very receptive. Anytime I call, he answers, and he even shows up to address any issues or ensure that the repair is going well. So that is basically a seamless transition as far as emergency services are.
That's good. Yeah, because we do have a transition team in place for the first year, meaning that we can set up meetings if there are bumps that are occurring. So I do want to make sure that if there's anything, you'd please do, you know, reach out, let myself know, and obviously I know Ron will also help facilitate, but we can definitely set up some meetings all the way down. Thank you.
All right, so I already asked for unfinished business and new business. Any second call on that? Because we have some time, about ten minutes. So.
New business, I'd just like to say happy birthday to our youngest councilman.
He's getting all ready. Yes. Happy birthday, Tyler. Yeah.
Yeah, this job really is just.
So with that, we'll adjourn the work session. All in favor? Aye, and we'll start up at eight sharp.
I need a motion and a second for the adjournment.
So moved, Yakarino. Second, O'Toole.
All in favor? Aye. Everybody, it is January nineteenth at eight o'clock, and this is the Mayor and Council regular session. A regular session of the Mayor and Council will be held in person on January nineteenth, beginning at eight o'clock. Linda, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement, please.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website. Councilwoman Holman.
Yeah.
Salute to the flag, sorry.
Ah, yes. All right. Now, Linda, please take a roll call.
Okay. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes, here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yakarino? Mayor Wozinski.
Here. Okay, so now we're going to have the appointment and swearing in of our new council replacement resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven. Appoint a councilperson for the governing body vacancy. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, O'Connell.
Second, please.
Just for the record, maybe someone making the motion wants to put a name with it.
With a name in it. Insert name here.
Second, O'Connell.
Okay. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes, for the appointment of Joe Deloissio to counsel.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
All right, are you ready? Come on up.
Yep. Yay.
Hi, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution
and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
the same
and to the governments established
and to the governments established
in the United States
in the United States
and in this state
in this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly perform
and justly perform
all the duties of councilman
all the duties of councilman
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Yeah, if you want to follow it. Yeah, family photos for her. I love it.
Ready, one, two, three.
All right, so you were to be welcome. All right, you're popping up over. Where's your spot? Right here.
Just the one in the middle.
Have a thing from. All right, so now we're going to have our second public comment on agenda items only. Is anybody from the public like to come up and speak on agenda items only, please? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back. Next, we have our second hearing and our public hearing of ordinance twenty-three dash oh one. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter fifty-three of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, Officers and Employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Lovasolo.
Second?
Holman.
Okay, I actually have to read it. The following ordinance published her with was first read by title only on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero one, in ordinance to amend Chapter fifty-three of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, Officers and Employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Councilman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino? Councilman Deloissio?
I abstain.
Okay.
Okay, now we have our consent agenda that we reviewed. Do we have a motion to vote on the consent agenda, please?
So moved, O'Connell.
Second, O'Toole.
Okay, roll call.
Okay. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Resolution twenty-three fifty-two, abstain on expenditures to Coban Computers. Vote yes on the downs.
Okay. And Councilman Deloissio?
I abstain.
Okay.
Mayor, this time I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to conclusion to discuss personnel matter.
Okay.
Second, Yakarino?
Roll call, please.
Wasn't expecting that. Hold on. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Deloissio?
Yes.
Let me just say for the record, the anticipated length of the closed session will be five to ten minutes. There will be no action taken by the governing body at the conclusion of that meeting, so that other than the public comment portion of this meeting, there'll be no other formal action.
Okay. And next, we are going to our final public comments. Does anybody from the public have any comments on anything for three-minute speech? Okay, sing. Come on up. Hello.
Mary Council.
Hi, Mark.
Mark Savistano, twenty-two rule in place. I'm going to have to
swing it.
Do this from the top of my head. Well, first of all, thank you, Suzanne, for your participation in the the APS Styrofoam event that we did with Waldwick. It was very successful.
I heard.
Thank you, Mayor, for your encouragement ahead of that.
We owe an email to the mayor. On our behalf. Oh, perfect. Thank you.
We did feel that. We did fill that forty-yard dumpster in the time allotted, and there were a, a total of ninety households, uh, from uh, Wildwick, thirty from Allendale, um, and from surrounding communities. There were a few other as far away as Hackensack and, uh, from Englewood. So, yeah, we, we did have a very good response. Um, I wanted to ask, um, if we could possibly ask for voluntary participation from the builder, if they would be willing to set aside any foam when they're doing the construction of the project, uh, at the property that's being developed. Um, entirely voluntary, ask them if they would set it aside, and we can pick it up and, uh,
I can certainly, if they recycle it elsewhere, is that acceptable? I mean, are you, are you saying that, cause w- w- we don't necessarily want the styrofoam, right? Is there any value for us having more styrofoam, but if they recycle it in their own way?
I- if they are going to recycle it, that would be great. Um, it could also be used, uh, for us to, uh, contribute to our certification if we know that they are doing it. But if they're going to put it into dumpsters, then, uh, we could take it to the, uh, the county processing and, and in one of the other events and, and have it for certain recycled. So that would be helpful. Um, also, the, um, the compost bins continue to be very popular. Um, Jim Wright, uh, posted something on oh-seven four oh-one, and we got an immediate response. Uh, two more people asked about purchasing the bins. So, uh, I wanted to know about, uh, purchasing another batch. Uh, we would go about, uh, doing that ahead of our, uh, our plans, um, with the birthday event, uh, Allendale. Spring cleaning, I think you called it, right?
I think it was something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and somebody also asked about recycling air conditioners. And I know we accepted them last year, and I wanted to make a, uh, a correct response if we were going to be accepting them again this year at that event.
I don't, actually, I do not know at this time, I'll have to find out.
If, if, uh, that's planned, then I can give them an accurate answer as to how we would handle that.
Yeah, that was a special, w- we have to look into, that was like, um, it was very strange to get someone that accepts refrigerators and air issues with the free on and all, so we'll have to find that name again, see if they would come back.
Going to contact the county, because I don't recall if the BCUA accepts them at their electronics.
They do.
So if they do, that's an option, yes.
Um, yes, I have a couple of questions. Um, one was at this birthday, whatever event we have, will you, could you have somebody that would talk about the appropriate way to compost and potentially also kind of, you know, help like people that are having problems with their composting, all that sort of stuff, cause I, I do think it's exciting that people are starting to compost, but if they're not doing it correctly, they will easily become dissuaded, and then, you know, as opposed to if they have an opportunity to learn how to do it.
That's a good idea, and we can plan for that by, uh, maybe having a demonstration of, of materials that we can put in it and how to layer them, et cetera.
Yeah, and just, yeah, like troubleshooting again, just personally having had some problems myself.
Yeah.
We had discussed with the green team too about, um, when we do that demonstration about having maybe John or someone record it, and then we can put it on, um,
That's a good idea.
On the green team page.
And the other question I have, and it's a little bit on the selfish side of the fact, so we did this whole styrofoam recycling. Is there somewhere where styrofoam is actually kept? If you needed to use it, I actually need some styrofoam for a project at the high school, and I'm like, oh, everybody just recycle all of their styrofoam, and I would use it and then put it back to recycling, but is there any place to?
There's always, in fact, um, Justin Squipack, who lives in town, I believe he's a physician.
Maybe I'll just.
And asked, asked me about recycling foam, so I know he has some available. So I can put you in contact with him directly. I also have some of the softer foam, which is actually, can be recycled along with the plastic bags. So if that's suitable, I can give you some of that.
Thanks.
And thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Anybody else? Sure, come on up. Get your name, please, um, and your address for the record.
Uh, CJ Foster, one forty-six Park Avenue. Um, so, uh, thanks for the time.
Of course.
Um, I'm here for, in regards to a proposal to, uh, buy and, or acquire an adjacent strip of land.
Just read that email today.
Yeah, so, um, as far as process is concerned, I, I was before, at the December Land Use Board meeting, uh, and went, uh, went pretty well as far as the reception is concerned. Uh, process-wise, I was told mayor and council was the, was the place to go to figure out how to do it and, uh, what we need to do on our end. Um, so, um, I'm here now, so I'm not sure if I, I, I believe Linda sent out PDFs of, uh, of some of the photos to give a, uh, better conceptualization what we're looking for. So I have copies of it now, if you guys wanna look at it. I'm not sure if this is the, uh, perfect form.
Wanted to, um, distribute that so that everyone can look at it after the meeting. I will contact, uh, Chris Spada and follow up and see what occurred at the land use board meeting, and then talk logistics, and I saw the email as well, so at least we have contact information. And, and I'll follow up, uh, you know, accordingly.
Okay, so, um, so I know Linda had sent out PDFs, she said, to everyone on council, so do you need hard copies now, or is it?
Yeah, I'm, I, I don't, I have the PDF, but if anybody else wants them.
I'll take a copy.
I actually.
Thank you very much.
If you printed them already, that way.
He'll take one. I, I have mine.
Oh, well.
You guys wanna go home, less than what you came with it? Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with Chris, and then one of us will be back to you in terms of logistics.
Yeah. Thanks so much. Nice to meet you. Nice meeting you. Welcome to Allendale.
Welcome.
Anybody else from the public? Anybody else? Okay, not seeing anybody. Motion to adjourn.
Closed session.
Motion to go into closed session. Okay, second, Holman. So we're gonna go, we'll be back in five. I know. We're back in regular session. Um, did anybody, um, have a comment? Before we adjourn?
Uh, I have a comment, Mayor. So, uh, I just wanna thank the Republican Municipal Committee for nominating me. I wanna thank my family. I wanna thank you, Mayor, my fellow council members, and all my neighbors and the community at large. This is, it's an honor, and it's something that I've always dreamed about, and I will give you a hundred and ten percent, so.
We are so thrilled to have you.
No, you will.
Yay! All right, well, we're gonna have fun now. So motion to adjourn.
So moved, okay.
All right.
Second, Holman.
Yep, yep. Okay, all in favor?